Welcome everyone along to the all members Stanley Town Council meeting tonight. On Tuesday the 22nd of October. And we move straight on to the agenda. Any apologies for accents.
Thank you Madam Mayor, we have a few. councillor John Tubby, councillor Davidson, councillor Pallas, councillor Carl Marshall, councillor Wilkinson, councillor Joyce Clarke, her apologies, and councillors Christie and Caine are present.
Thank you. Takes us on to item two, declarations of interest. Does there any declarations of interest here, George?
Could I just make a declaration of interest in item nine please?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's announcements. I would just like to suggest that we move item nine on the agenda which is the detachment project to up to up one please. After item seven we do the committee minutes, so you can hear them and they don't have to sit through all our discussions if that's okay with everybody. And the other things I would like to report since the last meeting, things that I've attended, things that's happened. On the 26th September was my charity race night packed house which we raised over £500. So thank you to everybody who supported us. Had a fantastic night, good turnout, fantastic food, thank you for packed house. On the 9th of October I officially opened Headley House in Southwark, the new change in lives project for children who's been adopted. That went quite well. On October the 11th I had photo shoot at Tamble Lake Community Association. That was off for the strategic grant fund mission. That was for the repairs to the stairs. On the 17th of October photo shoot at the women's, just for women's centre, they bought a cutting machine with their money. And on the same, on that same night I was along at the reggae body band, another photo shoot, and they put a wall partition in and live in the storage area for all the music sheets and everything. On the 21st of October last night, we had our blue and good fun and I'm sure everybody will agree, we had a brilliant night. It was great, fantastic visa. And we can move on and move on to next days. On the 5th of October David attended Sedgefield Town Council civic service in place of me. Thank you David. And coming up, I have a Christmas carol service on December the 8th at 6pm in Civic Hall. It's been advertised at the minute. And on the night there will be mince pies, mulled wine, and pigs in blanket bath. And your hand, you take it over and you get that on that night. And that's my announcement.
We move on, just like the usual announcements. Obviously we are at full council meeting, so please members, you're welcome to be recognised by the town mayor before speaking and would please stand when speaking. Also, could I ask the honourable members too for having them set their phones to silent or turn them off? And just to remind everybody that we are filming the meeting this evening and one other member of the public is also filming the meeting. Are any of the members or what else present who are calling the meeting? So, thank you.
We move on to item four which is the leader statement.
Stanley Town Council this last week have just received the bronze award for the defensive employee recognition scheme which is part of the Armed Forces Covenant. We've got a certificate here, so I'd like to present it to all members, chum, in clumps the data mark.
Gosh, true, because there's a light right behind you, it's making you glow there. Thank you very much. Can I share a tip? I attended the workshop for the Catholic along with, and found it most useful. It showed what they were doing now for personnel when they were due for discharge, the training they were given, how they did it, and how it would help. And of course as a design, wrong people when they ought to be discharged and had so many years on to forget it, like versing, and they can invest in that and go away and get trained, so it was excellent. And I'm sure we'll be able to take that forward to prisons in our area and maybe suggest them then to join the Armed Forces Covenant. So I'm quite pleased with that. That's pretty much to them. Another ten in two events. One the first, if you shall, along the fifth, if you shall. Lovely.
Thank you David. The mayor, you've already mentioned this, but I think last night was absolutely brilliant night, man, really great. I think you said that it was a great award tonight, but I would like to have all the stuff, all the heart work that went into it and the planning, the school run of the event. And I'd also like to wish Tugfield best of luck on Friday in Britain and Bloom, that sincerely hope he come back with a big trophy. Looking forward to couple of busy months of the year, the end of the year. Looking forward to all the forthcoming events. Remembering Sunday with all the different services, the lightning of the beating on the night. And we've got the half turn cinema with the, gee, I checked the kids. The Christmas tree lights switch on on the 7th of December and I'm assured it's going to be a bit of a showstopper. So I am looking forward to this probably, a lot of people are saying what actually in going to be in stock for it. So thanks very much.
We move on to item five, group participation. Do you have any? Nothing? Item six, confirmation of the minutes attachment B. We're asked to approve this current record. Thank you Alex. Do we have a second, David?
Members happy to agree those minutes?
Next item on the agenda is committee minutes attachment B.
Members asked to receive the minutes.
I know, we just received both.
Members happy to receive those minutes?
Now we move to item nine which is the detachment project.
How do you want to do it?
Would you like to come and sit here so you can talk to members, so you're not having to look around, I'll come sit down there.
Well, I would very much like to sit in the box.
Just go sit, there's one at this side here. There's one here?
Yeah. Well, I'll sit next to you. Hi, well, thank you for working with us, Stanley Town Council, obviously you've been big supporters and probably personally I'd just like to say I was an original Stanley Town councillor and I've never sat on this table in nine years. So, thank you for that, thank you for that honour.
So yes, thank you very much. So really it's just, we've given you the report, I don't know if there's anything you want to ask us about it, anything you think we're going to do in the future or?
Yeah, I'll throw a couple of things because I'm a better talker than Ruth, so I'll talk about that. And I would say overall we're very happy with how the project's gone, but more importantly so, the fact that young people's been doing really good, we don't always get it right, but we seem to be addressing now the needs of young people, which is changing very, very fast at the minute. And there's a big focus on mental health of young people who unfortunately are being left behind. And CAMHS and other services aren't keeping up with the need and we're seeing it more so worryingly so if it's accurate, a lot of our slant is fix the wellbeing and mental health and getting people's enjoyment back into life and sort of putting self-esteem back in, you know, that there is a future out there and you can have ambitions and then we'll come, you know, you can work hard, you can achieve, a lot of people don't believe that. If you look through, you can see some of the work we've done, it's been really, really good, we've had some fantastic projects, well received, well run, well attended. We are now a member of the Stanley Youth Consortium which sadly is the last four youth providers in Stanley where we once had youth providers in double figures. And we've just done our annual report and I was over the moon because we are what you pass a small to medium sized project compared to the other one, and we actually are the highest attended youth project in Stanley at the minute which from my Ruth's personal point of view, so it says we're doing something right, so I'm happy to take any questions if anybody wants to give some questions or pointers or suggestions because we're constantly evolving.
Anybody got any questions?
Yeah. And social behaviour is probably one of the biggest problems within the area, isn't it? I like the bit where you said you're building awareness of the consequences, aren't you sort of, we're here to the kids and how are the kids sort of engaging in this?
If you refer to like the don't be a dick project, then in all honesty it was fantastic. It wasn't, it wasn't taken kindly by some of the, like the police and the fire team because of use of the word dick. I hope I didn't say dick in a council meeting without anybody being offended. But young people came up with a slogan. And obviously we had a young man, Corey, who organised a public meeting on the back of some of the problems we'd had, sort of prior works like when, whatnot. He's a young man, he's got his own problems and issues and he stood up, made a difference, we supported him, organised a second public meeting with him. And out of that was born the like, what, how do you embarrass your friends or how do you deal with your friends that are in antisocial behaviour or behaviour that's just unacceptable, not only antisocial, just sometimes careless or ill for out, like smashing a bottle or whatever. And they said, well, we say don't, don't stop your dick, don't be dick, and that's how the don't be a dick thing came about. And I think when I wrote this report, it was up to 75,000 hits, it's close to 100,000 people have seen that video. And it's fair enough, it highlighted Stanley at some point for the wrong reasons, but now it's highlighted it for the wrong, for the right ones. But on the back of that, we had a problem and the problem has kind of drifted away, but it's not gone. Ruth came up with an amazing idea because we went and had antisocial behaviour meetings for a month or month or month or month where we just had to people say we don't got any money. So we will have four people at Stanley fireworks funded through ourselves from the reserves we've managed to build up through a bit of work elsewhere. So we're going to put four youth workers out on Friday night, they're going to be down on the field, our keys are going to drop in Stanley. And I can't guarantee how effective they'll be or whether it will make a difference, but as a very small project in Stanley, we're making a difference and we're making a net to do something that's an obvious need, we're going to address it. Same as Ruth's idea to do it and I, I was a bit worried because, you know, there's a lot of people about, but she convinced us and we've got blue high vis, you see a blue high vis with stars on the back?
Green, green.
Green, oh, green. So, yeah, antisocial behaviour is an ongoing thing. The problem we've got as well is that successful projects gather children to them and in groups of people can be seen as antisocial even if they're just saying, what are you doing on Friday? But yeah, it's kind of working. There's a lot of young people now realise that, that there is a consequence that we actually do. Not so many adults, but lots of young people do, so.
You know, it's what we wanted out of this project, you're delivering what we wanted and, and great work, you probably undersell yourself a bit, you know, you like to do more, everybody wants to do more, but what we achieved nothing is, and absolute brilliant testament to the work you do.
I think it's the engagement, the heart and soul to, like, young people, you know, the fighters chilled out and be able to talk, was to build relationships and I think that has helped across the Stanley area to reduce some of the issues that we have.
There's a lot of trust, I know, we've built the trust and relationships there. It can be quite hard in how many times, you know, you give you good times, you give you bad times, but I don't think that many young people don't feel able to access one of our workers or any support, which is great.
Well, it's, it's good work.
Sorry, I've just got a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. No one? First one, David, is the average report and I've seen the number of children, young people you've been engaging with and it's been consistently, you know, a hundred or people. How do you manage the capacity, because obviously we've only funded as a town council a certain number of sessions, I know that other funders have contributed funding to your project as well, but, but, you know, what is it like at the shop and how is it, I mean, are you having to turn the kids away?
To pass your bones, if, if we run something in sports or a big building, it's not important. And what we're finally doing is doing a lot of medium sized things, so the numbers sort of start up. And I would love you sent that, the other day we used to have bulldozed that crime plus we'd never get it back and I, I could, I could take more than people decent, but we do occasionally have to just say, you know, even on activities or trips, or stop the funding because it tops out. And it's a case of, you hate to be ruthless with stuff, but we had young people saying, well, you save this place, you save this place, you know, that young person deserves a place and try to, but at the end of the day, I need to put problems on seats to, to peace funders and whatever. And it's, we're talking a lot, but I, I try not to turn anyone away.
We're talking a lot on, like, ourselves for nothing because we love, we love what we do, when we love the benefits of the people in Stanley.
Can I ask a follow up question as well? Sorry, this is a bit about, I don't want to, let me see if the members time, but obviously I'm aware you've got capacity issue because we all know that a huge amount of youth support capacity that there used to be that was sadly lost through the, you know, through the cuts that they all go across the board, but the other thing is obviously I know that you spread yourselves as thin as you can in a way, but one of the, one of the key aspects of youth work always traditionally used to be that you would kind of incentivise kids to behave themselves, so you'd say, well, you know, if you're good and you attend the sessions and you have a part to spread activities, then we'll have like a trip away to somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, that, that still happens.
Yeah.
And not so much because we're in the money for the trip away.
Yeah.
And the area youth consortium's doing really well with some funding from the AEP, so we have got more carrots than we had in previous years. Generally we're just trying to play, like, getting young people involved back into the community because, I mean, so I said, here's a carrot, be good, but what one says, this is where you live, it's worth being proud of. You know, that's respectful, you know, it's, we can do more with this, you were a part of it, which, which young people don't feel a part of it, so carrots is fantastic, but I think reading like respect and making young people into citizens, like, then drive forward that agenda is a much better way, maybe a little bit of the chopper room, because I realised of the character. But I'm a bigger, bigger fan of sort of challenging attitudes now and saying, this is where we need to be as young people and this is what you can bring to the community and this is what you're going to take back once you're in other ones.
I see that everyone, I mean, I, I don't know if I reflect all members' views, but certainly from my reading, what you've been doing and my analysis of it is that actually, you know, those communities that don't have a town council and AEP, they're interested in the youth consortium. You know, we're not, we're not where we'd like to be in terms of youth engagement, but we're certainly, we're struggling in areas that haven't got anything, you know, to...
Absolutely. I mean, effectively the town council funded the project on two occasions and it built a foundation of what we have now without it. I couldn't think where we would be. The town council stepped up at a time when no one was stepping up for youth work and and no one's been punted at it as, as ex-county council workers that came out of a redundancy and said, look, we would like to continue. And it was a bit of a gamble, but it's been a good gamble, I can't, I can't deny that, it's been fantastic and you have built a great foundation and we're building again on from that. I think we're now in town scale hitting a, a point where people are kind of looking and thinking, oh, youth services, they were quite important really. And, and it'll come back round and I think we were wise enough in that time funding it to, to have kept that, that expertise which is what we always want to do, is like, let's not let these people wander away, let's not lose this and have to build it again if we can keep it and weather the storm and move on and...
And we're going to reinvest in with people from Stanley, allowing them to be able to access their youth work qualification. So you've got your grassroots, you've got your people who live in those communities who are investing their time to do youth work and hopefully long term, you know, that's got to be a positive thing.
And absolute irony, the county council are funding like adult learning, one of the courses is youth work, we've got 32 people signed up. You only need 12, 12 is the maximum, they said put two porters on. So we've got to take all 32, we'll work with the other people as freebies on the site because we don't want to turn anything away. But there's obviously, local people see a need to be engaging with young people and some of them are people who will say, I would like to work with young people, some of the people who work around the periphery of young people, some of the people just community people based in buildings are thinking, I need to know more, I need to be better at this. And 32, you're also like, I don't know.
Can I just say thank you very much? Having been to a couple of the events myself, absent from your eyes, the MP, the children I meet with you, and I just think it's fantastic. And it really saddens me when people put on Facebook, there's nothing for the children to do. And I'm sorry, but, you know, this fantastic project and to think there's nothing for the children to do, it's a pity that, that, you know, we can't get it out there, shout from the rooftops the work you are doing, because I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
And as well, because we're flexible, it's a case of, you know, if we had a group of young people who said, well, I don't even want to do this, they've never worked with us before, but they won't happen to do it, let's find a way to give it a go, yeah? We're not rigid in that way, we're, we're very flexible, thank you, it looks brilliant.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. We move on to item eight now, which is recommendations of the committee. The finance and general purpose committee made the following recommendations.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Hopefully members have the opportunity to read both the finance papers that were circulated a week and a half ago and the papers that were circulated for this meeting. The recommendation of the finance committee last week was that we should not want a quarterly surveyor to do a full survey of the building at this time, we should prioritise the decoration of the main hall, this room, that's already been agreed by council, and the refurbishment of the, I always mix the two up, the annecy, is it, is it the annecy? As a smaller meeting room as a, as a community meeting place with a, with a better finish than it's currently got. And also that we should prioritise the refurbishment of the main toilets by the main hall because they are in desperate need of repairs and improvements. And other, other works should be deferred for a couple of years until after those works are completed. And to my discussion, that was moved to part B, finance, so we just have to consider that in the close part of the meeting because of commercial sensitivity issues. In relation to events, the recommendation of committee was that the meeting event should go ahead and some of the tent has preferred 2018 with better PR system. Hopefully council will grasp by that decision because we're all making preparations for that. And that the Christmas event will go ahead as previously agreed, will provide a real Christmas tree in the existing tree planter where the white tree has been for the last however many years, using the existing electrical insulation. And we will relocate the lights that were placed on the small tree and the adjacent plants in between the board school and shoe there and add those to the display of the Forneyham terrace. Those are the recommendations of the finance committee for co-visiting in Sydney.
And other questions come?
I'd like to take a jet. Members happy with that?
Yeah.
Great to do that, yeah?
Move on to item 10 which is the Stanley fund update, attachment B.
Hello, my, 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 my,
is, hopefully we'll get those very soon, and assuming, well, council has just agreed to the recommendations in respect of the work, so we can get other quotes for the toilets now, get them done as soon as possible. Policy working group is ongoing, not a problem, local council work is ongoing, and actually I think that we're on target, I'm going to need to achieve what we need to achieve to get the application in November as we planned. The first draft of the budget was reported to the finance committee, and it's again on this agenda for discussion. The IT and telephones, there's been a slight delay, hasn't there, and nothing to do with us, as far as told us that they'd have it installed by now, it's obviously not been installed as yet, and you've been chasing them last week, and you've been chasing them this week.
This week, they should, I'm expecting it by the end of the week, it's to do work, make sure we're, the actual, they do the boom, and then they'll, they'll, by the end of the week.
So that's imminent, obviously, we'll report when it happens, but we've basically ordered and been chasing that on a regular basis. The common strategy, that's, that's shown in the green, it's on target. The miners banner, I think Alan reported it to the last meeting, shows origin, I think Alan, through the contacts that he's made with councillor Marshall, through the Armed Forces Covenant, he's looking to work with some veterans to build that, isn't he?
Yeah, when we went up to talk to Armed Forces, they're, help heroes, they said they will help, they're going to use the banner case, they work on a big project at the moment, and then when that's finished, they're going to work on the banner case for us.
So that's the Southmore banner that which we have, town council has, we've had some repairs done in it, so that won't tear itself apart if we hang it up, and we've got some prices for banner cases, and now through his contacts, that Alan and councillor Marshall made through the covenant, it looks like they were going to get some veterans to come and build this case for us, which would be a nice little thing to get that done in the new year. Warmer Orioles, well, that's kind of an ongoing thing, that was about getting a condition registered, so when you want needed repairs, and they're looking at whether we could buy some grants, that would be a piece of work that needs to be done. The Louisa Morrison memorial reported last month that the top of the pack had done, and unfortunately, because the weather's kind of turned, what we wanted to do was, when we put that in the park, we wanted to kind of have a nice event and invite the relatives, because there's still relatives around, but the weather has kind of turned a bit now, so I think we're scheduling that in for after spring, early spring, once the, once the weather's improved, to put that into the park, and that was the end of that list, so it's just really, if members have questions on that, please decide.
Any questions? And the next thing on the agenda is the exclusion of press and public due to commercial sensitivity.